All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is a November 9th meeting of the School District of Waukesha Board of Education. We're going to turn down the volume in the other room. While we're doing that, why don't we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Sue, can you please take the roll call?
Mark Burowski.
Sorry.
Cory Montiel.
Here.
Keri Kozlowski.
Here.
Markell Moore.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Here.
Anthony Zanobia.
Here.
Karen Robertson.
Here.
Kelly Piasik.
Here. Bear with us for a second. I'm just going to let them address the volume. Otherwise, we will all go a little bit crazy. Sue, can you verify that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. All right, we're going to start with bright lights tonight, and I'm pleased to introduce Athletic Director Carl Anderson, Golf Coach Dan Knuth, and Student Athlete Nora Saroni from North High School. And Nora just had her second straight appearance at state for girls' golf. She's graduating this year. And so, welcome to Nora and Coach Knuth and Mr. Anderson. Coach Knuth, do you want to share a little bit about Nora's season? The microphone at the podium is active.
I won't give the echo, right?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, yeah, I'm Dan Knuth, and I've been teaching at Waukesha North since 1997. So, you know, a lot of familiar faces in here. Yeah, Nora, you know, it is so difficult to make it to state, but that, you know, Kelly, you mentioned she made it two years in a row. We were just absolutely so proud for her to do that. If you can see like a bundle of nerves on a golf course, you know, like Nora had that her like sophomore, junior year, but she just was, you know, so smooth, her ending rounds and not exactly how she wanted to finish. She was still top 20 in the state in Division One, which is just really amazing, you know, flirting with par all year, you know, 72s and 75s, and broke 80 at University Ridge a couple of times. So Nora, we're just, you know, really proud, and we thank you for having us here because this is cool to see, I'm sure for you guys too, to see some of the bright lights and see what the kids in Waukesha are doing. So Nora Saroni.
Congratulations, Nora. So I just wanted to point out one thing. I don't know if everybody knows this, but our girls' golf is actually a collaborative across the district. So the girls are playing together from north and south and west, which I think is pretty cool. Nora, I don't know if you're comfortable sharing a little bit about what that experience has been like for you, because it's different than some of our other sports.
Yeah, I think it's definitely more of a tight-knit team, since we only know each other through golf. We don't know the drama that someone had, or, you know, just a lot of like interesting relationships some teams can have with each other. You know, ours is we just know ourselves solely from friendships. At the beginning of the year, we have a team like sleepover, pool party, bonfire, because we don't know, you know, two-thirds of our team. So that's a lot of fun. And it's also great, because we have a big team, so there's 20, 25 kids that we get to get to know. Other teams only have six, you know, and it's more of a, like a tight group versus kind of a group of girls.
It's great to see. I had the privilege of watching a few of Nora's holes at whistling straights this year. Impressive for all of us wannabe golfers to see you shooting those 70s and low 80s is just so incredibly impressive. So we're proud of you. Congratulations. Thank you all for being here.
Congratulations.
Thank you for having me.
All right, next on our agenda for tonight is a report by student representatives. Tonight, we have South High School Student Representatives Elle Haddon and Nikuria Hopson to give us an update on activities and events at South High School. Come on forward.
I am the president of BSU. I am a part of the Student Government Panel, and I'm an Avid, and I was also a senior standout.
My name is Elle. I participate in varsity volleyball. I am a photographer. I'm in choir, and I'm also on Student Council. I am the exec board member that deals with public relations. So I'm also a standout senior. And this year, instead of doing Homecoming Court, which is usually a bigger thing around homecoming, we decided that we're going to change things up and make it a little more positive than a popularity contest. We decided that senior standouts are going to be people who go above and beyond, and they will do anything for South. They do amazing things for their personal life and community. They showcase seniors who have made an impact on our school, and they are role models for other students.
Okay, so first, we have the Avid for Possibilities. So Roman Alver, what's his last name? He graduated last year. He was the third Avid speaker from South High School, and he presents to over 2,000 educators. And I personally did not know Roman, but I was able to hear his graduation speech. And I have to say, his speaking is as strong as it is. And a good quote that he gave was, "Given the courage to dream big and take educational risks, we were forced to get out of our comfort zone. We were no longer trying to stay under the radar, but trying to develop meaningful connections. We were no longer trying to keep to ourselves, but willing to learn each other's stories." And that was powerful in itself. Is that going to play? Should we watch it play? Nope. Okay. Another thing we did at South is the No Hate High School Tour. So pretty much, it was this tour that came to our school, and they're like BMX pros, and they performed for us, and they just told us about the effects of bullying and like what different types of bullying we had. And it was very exciting and like inspiring to me. I learned about the different types of bullying and how they can really affect other students. And I'm glad we, as South students, were able to like experience the No Hate Tour and just see how they can impact other people's lives.
So a really, really huge thing that happened, we have an amazing mock trial team, and they recently just went to Empire Chicago Mock Trial Tournament in, or like later October. They placed 15th and received an honorable mention for their sportsmanship. There were so many teams there, so 15th is phenomenal. Plus, out of more than 100 astounding attorneys, Senior Talani Sopow, she's on the right of the picture, she was awarded Outstanding Attorney. So we are so proud of her and so proud of her hard work, as she put it. Another really, really huge thing that I'm so proud of this program is the Drama Program is performing Badger. Badger is based on the 1944 during workforce's darkest days of World War II. It's a lot, it's historical, it's about five young women. They take newly available jobs, and they work at the Badger Ordnance Works in Wisconsin, so it's based off Wisconsin. They face dangerous working environments, the women from, they form unlikely friendships, and they fight for the insidious sexism of the time period. So show dates are November 10th and 12th at 7:00 p.m. and 13th at 2:00 p.m. Tickets are going to be sold on Black Shirt Players at ludis.com. And again, this is an amazing show, proud of the Drama Department. I was actually there. It was like a snake peek. I went during their rehearsal, because I'm taking pictures for the yearbook, and it was an amazing show. I really connected with it. And so, since it was such an amazing show, they actually, they put a version, they did a one-act version of it, and they qualified for a state competition at UW-Whitewater. They competed at Sectionals West last Saturday. So in two weeks, they're going to be at Whitewater.
Another thing we have on the agenda is the UW-Whitewater College Visit. So Avid usually does take a couple of college visits to like certain colleges in Wisconsin. And so, over 150 of our Avid elected students visited UW-Whitewater on November 7th. And one of the things I really enjoy about Avid is the opportunities given to the students towards our colleges, and to get help with deciding what college they want to attend. And I feel like college is a very important part of our futures, and it shouldn't be taken lightly. So that UW-Whitewater visit was helpful in helping us decide what like, what we want out of college, what we don't want in college. We also have onsite admission days at South, and this year, I feel like we had a very good amount, and over 50 seniors were accepted during the onsite admission days. And I feel like they're very helpful, because most seniors like myself, we dread like waiting for, to hear back from colleges on if we got accepted or not. So the onsite admissions were kind of a relief. We also had a college and career fair, and me personally, I went there, and I was able to hear about a lot of opportunities that certain areas of the workforce offer, and that gave me more of an idea of what I want to pursue as a career. And I just feel like it like opened up my realization to how many colleges we actually have that are closer to us, instead of like farther out that everybody hears about. We also started something new this year, which is called the Wicker Awards, and this is when we recognized teachers for supporting, we're like recognizing their teachers, we recognizing our teachers for them supporting us by incorporating writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and reading into our daily lessons. And we presented them with rewards and like certificates. And the Wicker curriculum is actually helpful when it comes to organization and note-taking. Teachers using it in class helped me obtain information better, and I was happy to reward the teachers with the certificate.
So another really, really huge thing happened. Both our Health and Engineering Academies, they earned the Project Lead the Way High School Award. Project Lead the Way recognizes programs who are committed to increasing student access, engagement, and achievements. So one out of 204 schools earned this distinction, and I am so proud of our, both of our academies for being able to earn this award. Now, we're going to introduce some athletic successes and some activities. So unfortunately, I don't know if you guys all heard, so due to the overwhelming amount of injuries and concern for the football boys, the student athletes, the coaches decided that our homecoming game would be canceled. I can speak for the entire student body when I say it was really disappointing, and we knew going into it that it was dangerous. And however, we do understand that it was a huge decision to cancel it, because otherwise these students would have gotten hurt, and that's not okay. So although the boys didn't end up their senior season being unexpectedly turned over, we still celebrated them during our homecoming night, and we recognized all of them on the field. And since we didn't have a homecoming game at that time, we needed something to fill for the game, because we still celebrated everything else. We'll get to that in a second. It was really important for students to still celebrate our homecoming, because homecoming is huge important, and I know me and Kiri here were seniors, it was really important. So the student body and staff, we all came together to find a solution. Ironically enough, me and Kiri both were in Powderpuff a few days before, and we had a few matchups, and we collectively decided that we were going to do a rematch. So in order to include the football seniors and the student body, we ended up doing a junior versus senior coed football games. We had the senior boys and a few of the Powderpuff Girls do it. And this was a super important night to everyone, and we wanted to salvage that homecoming feeling that everyone really yearns to have. And so, we did end up winning our homecoming game, and I thought that was really cool.
We still also celebrated South Fest. Although the football game was canceled, South Fest still went on, and it was quite enjoyable. Our amazing band, dance team, and cheer team performed, which is always fun to see.
Now, we're getting into the qualifiers. There's a few of them. So our girls' swim team took second place at the Sectionals qualifying. Eight swimmers, the state swim meet and dive this weekend at South. This Saturday, or the next, yeah, next Saturday, oh, this Saturday, nevermind. They swim nine races, which is so crazy to me, because I don't swim, but nine is insane. Our boys soccer team had a 14, four, and three record, and along with their phenomenal record this season, they won the first regional championship since 2005. Along with the amazing soccer team, Coach Schwartz was the 2022 Classic Eight Soccer Coach of the Year out of every single team in our conference. And along with that are Fusion Volleyball Boys. So I don't know, you guys know that the Fusion Volleyball Team is Waukesha North and Waukesha South Boys combined to make a team. They're fairly new. This is their second year of playing, and they won the regional championship, which is insane for a team that just started actually, like just playing together in general. And they went on to play in the Sectionals match. However, the close loss was against the D1 Champions CMH. So we lost against the champions. So the girls' volleyball, we saw a lot of success in the program this year. This was the second straight year in a row that we won the first round playoff game. So I'm really proud of the programs for that. And March Fest. March Fest is the second-largest band festival in the state of Wisconsin. I hope everyone knows what March Fest is. It's so fun. This is South's 32nd year of hosting, and there was amazing performances by 17 bands, and with the support of nearly 100 volunteers.
So we also had something called the Sportsmanship Summit, and it's when South brought a team of 12 student athletes and four staff members to the Classic Eight Sportsmanship Summit. And basically, they addressed like positive influence when you have good sportsmanship and at events and competitions and such. And I said, South has been awarded Best Sportsmanship a couple of times, so this summit added to the characteristics South sports teams and student sections already have. We also have the Southside Cheer Showdown. Our Southside Cheer Team has won three times in state, and we're preparing for the biggest cheer competition in the state, the Southside Cheer Showdown, on Saturday, December 10th. And I definitely think our cheer team will win. They keep the South spirit alive at sports games.
Yep. And that will conclude the presentation. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Don't leave yet. Don't leave yet, ladies. We probably have some questions and comments for you. Very well done. Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Mr. Como.
Your enthusiasm's great, ladies. Thanks for that report. I'm a graduate from South, 1980, so quite a few years ago, both my kids went through the school district. They both graduated from South. And one was in bands, so when you mentioned March Fest, it kind of brought me back. And at the time, the band was, it was starting to shrink a little bit, and we were having trouble really getting other teams to come, other bands to come to March Fest. And I think, I think the senior year, my oldest daughter, I think we had eight bands that were performing at March Fest. And I think there were only like five signed up until like two weeks ahead of time. So the band director at the time was like, oh my gosh, we got to get, we got to get more bands here. So 17 bands is huge, and it takes a lot to coordinate that. And I know, I know one of the tricks, quote unquote, of getting more, at least I view it as a trick, maybe that's the wrong word, but the trophy that is presented to the winner of March Fest is huge. And I think the first year it started was when we were so, we had so few bands coming, they like made the trophy larger than any other trophy. And I just don't know if that's continued or not, so. But what a fantastic event. I'm glad to hear that it's healthy, and really appreciate the report that you guys gave, and the honesty behind, you know, not having the homecoming football game, understanding why. But what if, I really appreciated what you guys came up with. How did, how did the decision actually get made for the game that was actually played?
So I think originally, it was, who was it? It was Mrs. Schmidt.
Yeah.
One of the cooking teachers and the Student Council, one of the Student Council, she runs the Student Council. And we were talking with the Powderpuff Group chat, and it was really funny, because we were all like, oh my God, what are we going to do? Like, we don't have a game anymore, and these boys are going to be really upset, they can't even play their game. And then, one of our seniors, Angel Hernandez, decided that we should do a rematch. And everyone's like, yeah, that's an amazing idea. So someone go talk to Ms. Schmidt. And then, we kind of brought it up to the rest of our classes in general, and everyone's like, that's a cool idea. So I think that's where it kind of originated. Ms. Schmidt definitely pushed it out there, and we were, I'm surprised that it got out so fast, so I'm so like amazing, amazing job to Ms. Schmidt for doing that, but, yeah.
And the seniors also won.
Yeah, we won, so.
Well, that was very creative, and I'm glad that you guys were able to figure something out in a short period of time. It sounds like it was super successful, had some good memories, and that's really the thing that needs to come out of homecoming, is some really good memories. So thank you for being creative and trying to, you know, go back to your team and say, yeah, you hit it out of the park with that one, so.
Mr. Montiel.
Thank you. Number one, thank you for presenting today. Number two, excellent job. I know it's not easy to sit up there. You did it with poise and grace, and it was entertaining. You mentioned Roman. He actually presented here, I think, three, three, four times last year. It was nice to see him up there, and it looks like he's doing well. As far as the South Stars, I forgot what you called them. Instead of a homecoming court, you had senior standouts. I'm sorry. How did, how did that come about, and how was that, how were those people determined?
So in Student Council, again, I said that we collectively, the Student Council exec group came together, and Mrs. Do decided that, that Homecoming King and Queen and Homecoming Court was a little bit more controversial than it was a couple of years ago. It was a big popularity contest. We didn't really look at how nice of a person you are. They, it was just like a giant, like, oh yeah, you're, you're cool. You're going to be the homecoming queen or king. And I think we really wanted to change the epitome of a homecoming king or queen, so we decided to make a standout senior. So it's just someone that really represents the school in a really positive manner, so.
Very good. Nice job.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Wow. I need to go South to South. There's a lot going on at South. So thank you, ladies, so much for the opportunity to come here tonight, especially on a school night, to show us that wonderful presentation. There was so much going on, and I appreciate your enthusiasm. I had the pleasure to talk to both of you, Nikuria and Elle, and you both shared some exciting aspirations with me, and I think that it's so important, if you would, if you wouldn't mind, to share, you know, what do you aspire to do upon graduation from South High School. So I'll give you both the floor.
Okay. So I plan to attend Howard University, and I want to major in law.
I plan on almost committing to Albright College in Pennsylvania. I want to major in Environmental Studies, Environmental Sciences, or Environmental Biology.
And so, I want to say good luck to both of you, and just know that, you know, you can do anything, the possibilities are endless, and so this is one of the greatest countries in the world. So keep working hard, and you'll achieve, okay?
Anyone else? Well, congratulations to you both and to all the success that South has had so far this year. Really hasn't been that long of a year, but tremendous accomplishment so far. So thank you for being here, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Me too.
We are now at the point in our agenda where there's an opportunity for citizens to speak. We have one speaker tonight, who will have five minutes to complete their comments. We'll post a warning at three minutes. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, to refrain from using any inappropriate language, and be, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited from speaking at future meetings. Speakers are here to address the board, not the audience. The school board does not endorse any comments made by members of the community here tonight. We would like to remind our community members of the impact of their words on others, and that our children are watching. We commit to communicating with you in respectful and productive ways, and ask that you do the same. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the board, and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that will detract from the meeting. Please note that no obstructions can be created between the board and the audience. Visual aids cannot be used, and the area behind the speaker and the podium should be clear during public comment. Also, in order to respect our speakers and meeting participants, please silence your cell phones at this time. Our first, our only speaker tonight is Paul Reese. Mr. Reese.
Good evening. Tonight, I've talked about something that's a little anecdotal, but I'm not alone on this. My daughter went to private school till eighth grade, and now she started high school at West. And this is a big transition, and there's one thing that scared me, one thing that worried me when I was going to come to public school, and that was math. And it's proven to be a struggle, and it's done a lot different. And it's integrated in Math One with the target and communication. That's something that she's not used to. The terminology and how this works is just something that's very foreigner, and she's struggling and failing in it. And I know she can't be alone, because there's a lot of kids that come from, from private school. And the problem with math in curriculums generally is this district does it this way, this district does it that way, this district does it that way. People move when their kids are growing up, and then you get stuck and you get behind because you get into a place. And I don't know what's going to be done. She's going to that JIT thing, you know, she does that whenever she can, but it just may not be enough, just because she's not familiar with the terminology. She was using, I read some of her notes, and she used flow for talking about volume. And, because I'm like, it's not giving you a speed here, you're not doing a rate, so this isn't what it's asking you. But she's just not used to this type of terminology. She's used to doing a problem, she's given a problem, and solves a problem, and that's the way she's used to doing math. So anyways, I wanted to share that with, we're coming up, and why we're struggling, and I know I'm not alone, because there's a lot of other families that come to, from private schools that don't quite do math this way. So the other thing I want to talk about is health insurance for our assistant teachers, and, or I should say, the lack thereof. And I've talked to someone about, you know, how are we going to pay for this? And there's, there's a number of ways that you could pay for it, but one of the things that we have done, this district chose to do, and it's going to talk about tonight, is to pay its referendum loan off early. So the only way I know how to pay off a bill early is by taking money from somewhere, putting it somewhere else. And I'm paying more money to something and putting less money somewhere else. And I just wonder if some of this was paid on the backs of not giving our teachers, our assistant teachers, healthcare. There's nobody in this room. It's just what is right is right, and there's nobody in this room who would want that done to them, or want that done to someone they know, and to not pay our assistants, give them healthcare like we do every other employee in this district, and cut their hours to keep them, force them not to work, they can only work so many hours, and you're out the door, you can't do anything more. You got to show up to help. Parents over the summer, they show up, a teacher and assistant, teacher gets paid, assistant doesn't get paid. These things aren't right. I wouldn't do it. You wouldn't get the best out of me. I just, this is a starting point for most people. They come here, get a job, get some magic, you know, get a career going, get it started, get a couple of years in, and if the good ones are.
Two minutes.
So anyways, that's about as much time I need to take, so thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. All right, moving on to minute approval. We have three sets of minutes for your approval tonight, minutes from the October 12th regular board meeting, October 12th executive session, and the October 24th special board meeting.
So moved, as presented?
Moved for approval by Mr. Montiel.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Zanobia. Any comments, questions, or corrections? All right, Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Cory Montiel.
Aye.
Mark Burowski.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Anthony Zanobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Keri Kozlowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to our communications. Dr. Seabird, any communications?
None this evening, Dr. Piasik.
Okay. And then moving to our WEF report, given by Mr. Burowski.
All right, thank you, Dr. Piasik. The WEF board met last Thursday and made some minor changes to their bylaws. One of them was decreasing the board overall size to 11 board members, and their hope is that they're going to drive some of that additional talent that they have in volunteers into working committees. They're currently seeking new board members, since some of them are coming up for their end of their term. So again, if you know anyone interested, please contact Waukesha Education Foundation. Next item is the annual Elegant Farmer Sale, just ended on Sunday. It was very successful. They raised over $6,000 by selling around 280 items. Another announcement is that we can now officially share that Genarac here in Waukesha has made a $7,500 donation to their new Classroom Connect program, and those dollars will be added to the 2023 grant total. total. And it's gonna specifically fund the STEM and technology-based grant requests during the school year. So, specific to that area. As you probably know, the district, Casual for a Cause kicked off and has already raised over $4,500. Special thanks once again to none other than Sue Etinger for heading that up and really driving the fundraising and the program and the benefits. And also, special thanks to all the school secretaries that helped, you know, run the program and keep it running smoothly. The big push now for WEF is the year-end giving and gearing up for the February event, which is the Evening for Education. That's on February 16th. There are many more sponsorships that are still available as well as plenty of ad space for that event. So, again, if you have a potential sponsor or know of someone that would either want the sponsorship or ad space, please contact Lynette and let her know. And she can share the sponsorship opportunity letter. Again, the event is February 16th and hope we'll see you there as well. And if you would like a paper invitation, in case you want to mail that out, good old snail mail, she has some of those. In fact, I actually have a few that I grabbed at the last board meeting. So, you can even get them tonight if you'd like that. I think that's, that's all I got. If you have any questions, again, you can contact Lynette or myself.
Thank you, Mr. Barowski. Any questions? I think Sue's emails about Casual for a Cause are some of my favorite emails to receive. She's very creative. So, thank you for that. Always makes my day. Very funny. Today I got a little bit of lesson in commerce and inflation and what I could get for $5. So, I thought that was pretty great. Thank you. Always appreciate that. And I love to see the teams come together, little competitive spirit, and everybody enjoys that. Thank you very much, Mark. Moving on in our agenda, we're moving to the consent agenda. Darren, would you present the gift for this evening?
Yeah, we have one gift from Waukesha County Department of Health and Human Services. They donated $600 to Hawthorne Elementary School to be used for their music program.
Thank you. That's really great. We appreciate that. Very generous. Your consent agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to have an item set aside for separate consideration, you'll have that opportunity. There were no expulsions tonight. There are no updates to policies and bylaws. So, there would be nothing to set aside this evening. Mrs. Robertson, would you present the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee of, oops, wait, that's the wrong one. Sorry. Yeah, that's right. Okay, sorry. We approved of three resignations, one leave of absence, and one new contract. The information was provided in your packet and an addendum was placed on your desk. I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. McCaffrey. Any questions or comments? All right. Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Cory Montio.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Seibert.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Piasik. Very quickly, I simply want to thank our staff, our kids, and our families for this great school year that we are all enjoying together. I also want to thank the board for your support of all of us. And in this last board meeting, somehow before Thanksgiving, I'm not sure how that's possible, but that is factual, encourage all of our stakeholders to take time for reflection on the many reasons that we all have to be thankful. I'm certainly thankful for many things, and that includes the opportunity to serve here in the school district of Waukesha. So, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. And that's all I have this evening. Dr. Piasik.
Thank you, Dr. Seibert. All right. Moving into our committee reports. Our first committee report out tonight is the Human Resources and Compensation Committee given by Mrs. Robertson.
Thank you, Madam President. For our action items, each year at this time, we develop a school calendar for draft for review. The committee and board reviewed this draft at their October meetings and offered feedback. A final draft of the 2023-24 school calendar was provided in your packet and is also available on board docs. Mrs. President, I move to approve the 2023-24 school calendar as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Como. Any questions or discussion? Okay. Sue, please take the roll call.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Cory Montio.
Aye.
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero.
And next, we had the review of the Staff Dress Code policy. At the October HR and Board meetings, the Staff Dress Code policy was reviewed. And we also had additional information that we discussed wanting the old language from our student handbook and policy, and then also what other school districts may have done. So, we talked about that today. And the policy and the corresponding handbook language is also attached in board docs. Mrs. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion about the discussion item, which was the Staff Dress Code policy? Seeing that? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Robertson.
Actually, I do.
Mr. Barowski.
Yeah, just question and comment, I guess. The information that was given to the board on the current Niola language, just for clarification, that's also in our policy, the current Niola language from 2021 to current. All right, the second, a couple of things. The second paragraph, it is giving consideration to the impact on the educational process and the diversity of the district staff. I don't know if anyone has any, I had noticed compared to the other samples that we had in the packet, we were the only ones that mentioned that. Not that that's good or bad. I'm just wondering if there's any, anybody can shed any light on why we may have included that and what it was potentially referring to. I mean, I can surmise what that is, but I just don't know if anyone can shed, shed light on that.
I'm going to defer to Mrs. Thede.
And I'll defer to Dr. Cook, who was involved in the update from that retired language, 17 through 21, and then the current Niola language where that change was made.
The, the, the reason why that was changed was due to, it essentially came down as a guidance to help address natural hair, natural hairstyles. There was, there had been some discrimination in the workplace about the differences among hair in people. And so, we included that language because we do have a diverse staff.
Gotcha. Okay. So, specific to that, although I suppose it could be open to interpretation in general for other things as well.
Correct.
The other comment I would have is, again, looking at the other language we had for some of the other districts, it consistently would mention not disrupting the educational process, but also mentioned, you know, or the work environment or work atmosphere. Personally, I think that's important for us to include, and it didn't look like we included that language in ours. Because when I think of dress code, it's not only what's going on, you know, and how it might impact the students or the educational process, but also just the work environment and coworker relationships. I guess so for what it's worth, I feel like ours should include not disrupting the work environment and work atmosphere as well. I don't know if anybody has any feedback or thoughts on that.
Thank you, Mr. Barowski. We did have good discussion. And I believe Ms. Thede is taking notes on what we want to include in our next conversation, whether we're gonna go back to policy or... Ms. Thede, do you have anything else?
I made a note of it and I will be drafting some updates. So, I made a note to include some language like that in the next draft.
Thank you, Mr. Barowski. Any other discussion?
That's all I have.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Policy Committee, for which we have no action or discussion items. Mr. Montijo, any additional updates with respect to policy?
No, Policy Committee did not meet, but we do have our Niola update. Dr. Cook and I are going to be, we're meeting the 12th, I believe?
November 22nd.
November 22nd. I wasn't even close, but it's on my calendar.
And then we're hoping to have a meeting the week after or the week following Thanksgiving. So, we'll poll the committee and then get everybody together the week after Thanksgiving.
Right. Yep.
Sounds like that might be a heavy lift. So.
I anticipated.
Wish you good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good meal before you sit down for that. All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is an update on the Finance and Facilities Committee given by Mr. Como.
Thank you, Mrs. President. We have two action items and four discussion information items. The first action item is approval of Richardson School lease of Pleasant Hill. Actually, the committee didn't take any action on this. We had some good discussion. We had asked Mr. Clark to go forward with the Richardson people and discuss some of the points that we had. And he should probably be bringing us back on another contract with those tweaks. It will be agendized again in December for our FNF meeting. The second action item is approval of the heating and, heating ventilation and air conditioning financing. Phase 1 and Phase 2A of the HVAC plan are expected to cost $10,327,349. Esser 2 will, Esser 2 and Esser 3 will fund $10,027,533. And $299,816 will come from the district funds, fund balance. Phase 1 and Phase 2A call for major HVAC upgrades at six school sites with the work beginning, work being completed in the 2023-2024 school year. The committee approved the HVAC financing plan totaling as I presented, and I so move.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Montijo. Any discussion, questions, or comments? Anyone? I'm not hearing any. I think we had a really productive conversation at FNF and we've been talking about this for some time.
For months, yeah. Yes.
I think the strategic change that we talked about Monday was the use of some of the Esser resources, which the committee felt was a nice way to utilize the unanticipated federal resources to cover some much-needed building improvements that we wouldn't have to pass on to the taxpayers. So, I feel very good about that plan. All right. Sue, would you take the roll call, please?
Karen Robertson.
Aye.
Markell Moore.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye.
Mark Barowski.
Aye.
Cory Montio.
Aye.
Anthony Zenobia.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey.
Aye.
Carrie Kozlowski.
Aye.
Kelly Piasik.
Aye. Passes nine zero. Mr. Como.
Yes, thank you. The first discussion and information item is the 2018 referendum closeout report. Findorf Construction, Bray Architects, and Building Solutions were in attendance to review the 2018 referendum project from start to finish. Overall, all schools received safety and security upgrades. Three of the middle schools and the high school had capital maintenance projects and building renovations. And before and after pictures are also on the website. So, if you haven't had a chance to take a peek at those, you'll see some of those impressive projects that we were able to complete. I also encourage our, our members, our constituents to, if you haven't had a chance to get out to our schools and see some of the work, try and do that. It's impressive. It's impressive. Due to the COVID school shutdown in March 2020, the referendum team was able to flex the construction schedule, thus allowing us to minimize the impact on the instructional day. Due to this, we realized a savings of $1.2 million that was then reinvested into safety and security at Hawthorne, Hillcrest, and Whittier. With all the projects complete, we came in under budget by $174,000. It's good news. Hard to do with that many projects. Impressive, I think. At the beginning of this project, we opted for a 10-year borrowing period rather than the industry standard of 20 years. This resulted in, this resulted in $13 million in interest savings for our taxpayers. $13 million. We've also defeased our debt and are now projecting our borrowed amount to be paid off in six years rather than 10.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Montijo.
I have a unique seat, as we all do, sitting in this boardroom. But I first saw this referendum process as a parent of a grade school or at some of you elementary. And I remember the administration going around touring and talking about it and being a skeptical parent that didn't know a lot about what was going on and looked at a lot of people and said, you are out of your minds. But then I looked and learned at the learning sessions, which were excellent, got to see it as a board member, and then look at it from a bunch of different perspectives. How well this was done is so impressive. Findorf did an amazing job to come in under budget. How they dealt with us as a board was fantastic. How Darren and his team and the administration attacked paying down this debt, the defeesance was more than impressive. How well this was done, I just can't stress enough. And it's so easy to see this little mention on the, the board agenda tonight and kind of let it slide by, but I didn't want to do that. So much hard work went into it by the staff, the administration, Findorf, and the board. Each one of you was involved in a lot of meetings. And all of this happened, you know, with COVID on top of it. So, I think the district did a very good thing here. As Mr. Como said, if you can walk through schools and see the changes, it's money well spent. That's a hard thing to say in public policy when government spending our money. But this money was well spent. And I think one of the most important things we can do is society and educate our kids. And on top of that, the safety and security improvements are of utmost importance. So, may not mean much, but from seeing it from the perspective as a parent who was very skeptical, I remember Dr. Cook coming around and Darren and everybody. To be able to sit here right now and look that you came in under budget, $174,138, I have not heard a single problem about Findorf throughout this entire process. I just haven't. It's just, it was so well done. So, thank you to the administration and Findorf.
I just, I just wanted to also point out Kurt, who is our consultant. He really did a good job. Kurt's business is Building Solutions. The process that he brought to this district, I thought was an excellent one. We weren't sure who we were gonna choose for a general contractor or for architects. And his, the process that he had was really, really excellent. We had selected Bray as our architects and Findorf as our, our construction team. And both did really good jobs. Bray was really impressive. And one of the things that I think really stood out was the passion that their team had. And there's one person in particular, Kate, who graduated from our district. And you could tell that she put every ounce of energy, every good thought she had into this. And you could just tell the pride that she had when she was presenting those plans to us before we executed them. And just the, how she presented herself on Monday, the whole team, how they presented. You'd tell everyone on those teams were really excited about what they had done and really, they should, they should be proud on that. And 66% of our constituents gave us a go-ahead for this project. And that was a, there was a lot of people putting their faith in us. And, you know, we did our best to deliver to our constituents. And we hope that they do get a chance to, to see the work that they paid for. And we hope that this serves our students for many, many years to come.
Thank you.
Moving on to our second discussion item, which is the 2023-2024 budget planning. The committee reviewed the timeline and the budgetary assumptions for the development and the eventual approval of our 2023-2024 budget. We begin right away. It's a long process. There's a lot of components to it. Appreciate, you know, the- Appreciate, you know, the timeline that Darren has used in the past and has put together, and I don't know if there's any questions on the components of, of that timeline, what we need to do? Any suggestions for improvements? Always looking for those? Okay. Moving on to our third item, our monthly budget report. Revenues and expenditures are within the budget limits for both the general and special education funds. The district is operating with our approved, within our approved budget in all other funds as well. Okay, and then Esser update is the final discussion item. The administration shared a trial balance of the items that have been approved by the Board. We have added Phase I and Phase II-A of the HVAC expenditure budget. This report will continue to be agendized on a monthly basis and keep the FNF Committee and the Board of Education updated on the utilization of the Esser funds. Questions or comments on those funds? All right, thank you. Well, Mrs. President, that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Como. All right, the next committee report on the agenda is the Teaching and Learning Committee, presented by Mr. Zenobia.
Thank you, Dr. Piasik. We had six discussion information items on the agenda on Tuesday, the 1st of November. The first of which was a technology update regarding student iPad applications. Our Board member Kerry Kozlowski requested this information from the administration to conduct an app inventory. The district has on-boarded apps into the system for over 10 years. Steve Schloman, our district chief information officer and his team, created a list that is accessible to all schools and apartments. The, the team will continue to develop a resource that can be shared with the public. It will be posted on the website as early as January upon completion of this process. Our second information item was the Common School Funding Purchasing Update. This was requested as a monthly report of book tiles acquired from the financial information and the financial information of these purchases to our library resources. Ms. Jody Landish explained the process and presented an update to us at the time of the 2023 budget and the expenses that were outstanding to date. Our third discussion item was the Secondary Literacy Update, which was presented to us by Tiara Rogers and Nancy Ronkey. They shared the progress of the Study Sync in our high school English departments. The curriculum was designed by the team, and it's currently focused on the implementation and professional development of this resource. They also provide us an update on the work of the middle school visioning team for the English, English Language Arts that launched last year, which led to the consideration of adopting a 6th to 8th grade middle school ELA curricular resource. The 6th and 8th grade middle school ELA pilot begins this fall in the general and dual-language Our fourth update, discussion item, was the Secondary Math Update. Rachel Herman updated us on the current course sequence. During the 22 and 23 school year, Waukesha launched its Integrated Math II at the high school level, which replaced Geometry. Additionally, a different teacher team has been working to determine the best set of course options to offer our students after Integrated Math II ends. In order to provide the maximum amount of opportunity for our students, the team is proposing that after Integrated Math II, students can choose between taking Algebra II, Honors Algebra II, or Quantitative Reasoning. Algebra II and Honors Algebra II are courses that were already offered in the district, and Quantitative Reasoning was approved by the full Board last month. Following Algebra II, students can choose a variety of math pathways illustrated in the handout you provided that is in front of you. These courses will be presented for consideration by the TNL Committee throughout the spring of this school year.
Any questions about that? I don't see any.
All right, our fifth item was on the Environmental Education from 4K to 12. Erica Yoss and Emma Koppel provided an update on the environmental education program and school and community partnerships that we have. They highlighted the outdoor learning opportunities for students at different grade levels throughout the school year. And our sixth discussion item was the KPI Report Out of our State Assessments. The last few months, the TNL Committee approved these teaching and learning performance indicators, or KPIs, and these were reviewed on the, on the TNL dashboard, which was provided a timeline to report on the progress of each of these KPIs. Jen Gennerman was, provided us, provided us a summary of these district student performances measured by the Wisconsin Forward Exam and the ACT scores. The first of which was the ACT composite will be one point above the state average. The state composite is currently at 19.3 for 20 and 22, 21, 22, and SDW is at the same 19.3, which reflects an improvement from last year of 19.1, but does not yet meet the goal. The second point was the percent proficient or advanced on the state forward exam, which will increase the ELA from 45, up to 45%. The current results are 37.7, which is a slight increase up from 35.3 of last year. Again, not yet to meet that 45% goal. The next point is the percent proficient in math on the forward exam will be increased to 46% is the goal. Students currently are at 40.3, which again is an increase over 37.4 of the last year. The final point was the percent proficient or advanced in 3rd grade ELA, which will look to increase to 50%. Our 3rd graders achieved 37.8 proficient, an nearly 5% increase from the previous year, which was 32.9. Excellent progress to be made on the way to that goal. Any discussion on that item? And that would conclude our report for the TNL Committee. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, December 6th at 6:00 PM here.
Thank you, Mr. Zenobia. All right, the last committee to prep an update on our agenda tonight is the Student Services Committee, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Madam President. The last Student Service Committee met on October 18, 2022. I have no action items on the agenda this evening, but I do have three discussion information items. The first is Birth to Three Transition to Early Childhood Special Education. Patty Havel, Director of Special Education, and Sarah Rier, Early Childhood Special Education Teacher, presented on our Birth to Three and Early Childhood Special Education. Patty and Sarah shared information about the process of engaging with families as the responsibility of special education in public schools starts when children are three years old. That means we hear from birth to three providers when children are two and a half years old, and we need to be prepared to serve the students' disability-related needs by the time they turn three. Any questions on that? Any discussion? Okay. My second item is Policy 2416, Student Privacy and Parental Access to Information. We discuss Board Policy 2416, Student Privacy and Parental Access to Information. The administration will review the committee's discussion and report back in future committee meetings. Is there any questions on that policy?
Mr. McCaffrey, if I could, I just had one clarifying question on that one. I know the way that that policy is written addresses some of the proactive surveying of students and not doing that without parental permission. If I recall in the past, potentially some of our vendors have reached out for feedback from students and/or families, and I'm not quite sure how they get that contact information. Do we... Right, like food services or transportation? Transportation is a little bit different, but it was like the food services survey. I'm assuming that that policy applies to those vendor conversations as well, and maybe I'm just throwing out that if we could have that consideration by the committee about how that's handled, I would appreciate that.
Yep, not a problem. Is there anything else on that policy? All right, my third and final discussion information item is Student Discipline Work Group. Our third discussion, the work group met on September 22nd. The work group will be using John Hannigan's Behavior Solutions as a basis for discussion around the school district's discipline data. Updates will be presented monthly on the group's work. Any discussion on that? Any questions? It's a big topic, a lot of work going into it.
Mr. Como.
Just remind me who's in the work group? Who consists of?
Sorry, many of our district-level administrators. There is a building principal from each school, a student services staff member, so a psychologist, social worker, counselor, and a teacher from each school. So it's about 75 people are getting together monthly to go through this process, to talk about where student behavior is at. We know that it's at different places in different schools, and that we're talking about the strategies that we use to try to support kids and support teachers as we work to develop those more pro-school behaviors that we wish to see.
It's, it's an important topic, and, you know, first when you hear 75 people, it's like, whoa, that's a, that's a big group, but you need input from all people.
Correct. We wanted to take a look at the people who are working with kids day-to-day, the classroom teachers, the principals who are administering discipline, and then the student services staff that are supporting kids who have more significant needs.
Thank you.
Just a quick question on process for that. I mean, how do you facilitate the input of 75 people? Is some of that pre-work, that they're coming, answers on things, or is it in the moment, in the meeting, or?
Yeah, so we bring people together. We have a couple of topics, prompts, that we go through, meeting by meeting. There's monthly homework, if you will. The book that Mr. McCaffrey mentioned, that Behavior Solutions through an RTI model, it lays out kind of a nice way for schools to go through and, and talk about what are our expected behaviors, both in an academic sense and then in a social sense, and then what are we doing to reinforce and teach those behaviors? And then we're doing a data analysis on a monthly basis to see where our office discipline referrals are at. The example that I've talked about on a number of occasions is like, we see more personal technology violations this year than we have in the past. We know why that is. The secondary schools have a targeted effort on cell phones. So by making that intentional effort, we're seeing that it's being addressed more. We anticipate that by the end of the year, we'll see fewer infractions because the schools will have created that as part of their day-to-day process to address it. In last year, we knew that behavior was a big concern for everybody. It seemed like it was popping up very, very regularly, and it was coming in ways that we didn't necessarily anticipate as a school system. We attributed a lot of that to the post-pandemic. This year, we've seen an increase in behavioral referrals, but we, the schools seem to have a handle on it, and I'm speaking across all 23 schools. There are some areas where we're working intensely on it, but people seem to feel a little bit more comfortable addressing it, which is good because it's allowing them then to process what they're doing, what are their expectations, and are they actually teaching those expectations? Because we, we can't hope to improve behavior if we're not willing to teach the expected behavior as part of our day-to-day routines.
Okay?
All right, thank you. Our next committee meeting is on Tuesday, November 15th at 6:00 PM in the boardroom, and that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCaffrey. And that concludes our committee updates and our general business. So at this time, are there any recommendations for future Board or committee action or discussion All right. Our next meeting of the full Board is Wednesday, December 12th at 7:00 PM here in the boardroom, and with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.